Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's April the 3rd, 2018. We're here at 6:00 PM at City Hall, 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And I'll now call the Granbury City Council to order. I'm going to call upon Chaplain Doug Pruitt with the Hood County Sheriff's Office to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Cadet Captain Brittany Pickard with our Junior ROTC. All rise, please.
Thank you, Mayor. If you will join me. Father God, I thank you so much for the favor that you lay upon this community. I ask for your continued blessings and your spirit to be with us tonight. Ask for your continued favor on this city council as they do the work that they do. It's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
This is the favorite part of my job, is being able to have presentations like we've got tonight for you guys. So we've got three really good presentations, and so I'm going to step down to the podium there, and we're going to go ahead and get started on those. Our first one's going to be a proclamation. If I could get Jeanne Kate, and I think you might have somebody else with you there. Okay, very well. You're the director, right, of the Children Advocacy Center? Good to have you here tonight with us. Tonight, I wanted to read an official proclamation. The proclamation reads, "Whereas children are the embodiment of dreams and inspirations for the future and as such deserve to grow and develop in nurturing environments free from fear and victimization. And whereas children abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support it needs in raising their children in a safe, nurturing environment. And whereas our society has a responsibility to protect our children and help them strive in a safe environment, as every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, feel secure, and be free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect. And whereas throughout the community, there are dedicated individuals and organizations such as Mission Granbury, CASA of Hood and Somerville Counties, Peluxi River Children's Abysski Center, Kids Armor of Hope, Hood County Crimes Against Children Task Force, and Hood County Sheriff's Department and the Granbury Police Department, who work daily to counter the problem of child mal treatment and help parents obtain the assistance they need. And whereas effective children abuse prevention programs succeed because of the partnership among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. So now therefore I, nenuod, as the Mayor of Granbury, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2018, as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Now in Granbury, I urge all citizens to join in the dedicating their energies to cherishing our children by helping them grow and develop free from victimization, so that many mature into successful adults. Furthermore, I urge the community to join Mission Granbury and CASA of Hood County and Somerville Counties by participating in Paint the Town Blue during the month of April by displaying a blue light or sponsoring a CASA blue flag to raise awareness of child abuse, which unfortunately is present in our community today." And I think Jeanne and these folks here have blue lights for everybody out there if you want. And we got started early this year, because it's, I think, the middle of last year, so hopefully we can light the town up in blue. And so we're working on that in the city, and everybody that has a porch light that needs a new light, put a blue light in there. Our next presentations are one that's really a, I'm pretty excited about. I think most people read about it in the paper already, but we've got a couple of national titles that we want to recognize tonight here in Granbury, at the city council. Both of them are lady contenders, most of them, so you know, it's not ladies first, so we'll just pick one here, and I'll start with, I'm going to start with the Stowaway Dance Team. If I could get the Stowaway Dance Team to come right up there and... I'm going to fault Carla for not telling them all to wear their uniforms tonight, but that's... Can you just line up over here? The Stowaway Dance Team from Granbury High School came home national champions from the American Dance Drill Team National International Competition held in March, the 23rd through the 24th, 2018, at the University of North Texas in Denton. The contest featured 170 schools, plus 22 teams from Japan, and 30 collegiate dance groups. And here's a quote from the coach, Brenda Diane Craig. She says, "It's been a four-year dream, and tonight it came true. My little eighth graders from my first year in Granbury are now seniors and national champions," with her comment. These ladies pushed themselves beyond the limits to be a part of something that was bigger than themselves. Hard work, sacrifice, dedication, and a higher pride made this all happen. So at this time, I am going to let these ladies introduce themselves to you, because as Stan knows, I'm not real good on some of these names. And I look down to some of these names, and you don't want me introducing you, so I'm going to let you ladies introduce yourself.
I'm Katherine Evans.
I'm Cassidy Jensen.
I'm Bonchica Bagagio.
I'm Kylie Patino.
I'm Bailey Schwark.
Miranda Mixon.
I'm Aubrey Duret.
Madison Weaver.
Kelly Hernandez.
Zara Griffin.
Cheyenne Terry.
And I'm Coach Craig.
Now if I could get the council to come down here, right down here in front, I'm going to let you guys get in this picture with us, but we have a little presentation for you ladies. Now, don't try this key in the city hall here, because it probably won't work. We've had a little presentation here. We're really proud. We're proud of what you guys have done. And I'm going to go ahead and read this certificate here. It is a Certificate of Recognition and Proudly Presented to the Stowaway Dance Team of Granbury High School in recognition of their national championship, titled in the American Dance and Drill Team National International Competition, held March 23rd, 24th, 2018, at the University of North Texas in Denton. So that'll be hanging in your trophy case. The only trouble with that, you've set the bar pretty high for the next year, I guess, but I think they can handle it, right? Our next presentation is with our Junior ROTC Rifle Team, and they too have won a national title, so if I could get all the rifle teams to come forward, please. This rifle team, members of the Granbury Marine Corps JR ROTC, took the top honors as the national champions at the JR ROTC Air Rifle Championship, held at the Gary Anderson CMP Competition Center in Port Clinton, Ohio, on March 22nd through the 24th, 2018. All these folks here represented Granbury High School in the 3x20 air rifle event, featuring competitors firing 20 record shots from three positions, the prone, standing, and the kneeling, and over that two-day contest. The Granbury High School top squad of McGrath, Hathaway, Sheffield, Henry, they shot a 4,689 out of a possible 4,800 points to claim the national title. This was 23 points ahead of Eldorado High School, New Mexico, so we are really proud of that. And here's a quote from Lieutenant Colonel Scott Casey, and couldn't have said it any better. He says, "I couldn't be more proud of this team. The team worked hard the last 30 days after a close victory at Service Championship last month. Throughout the whole championship, they never panicked, and they pushed for every point. I knew we had a special group from top to bottom at the beginning of this session." So he had all the faith in the world on you girls, so y'all did it. The high school cadets from the Army, Navy, Marine Corps, and the Air Force JR ROTC, they met on a firing line to compete a journey that had been months in the making. Over 7,000 junior shooters participated in the 2017 civilian marksmanship program postal competition in October, with the highest-scoring shooters in each branch qualifying for the Junior ROTC National Service Championship last month. And this team brought home the national title, so let's give them a hand. And once again, I'm going to let the cadets introduce themselves.
Mulia Lambden.
Clarissa Leyland.
Ally Henry.
Kelsey McGrath.
Elizabeth Plussey.
Mackenzie Sheffield.
Brittany Pinkard.
Trinity Hathaway.
There you have them, the national champions, right here. And we do too have a plaque for these folks. If I could get the council to come down again. Who's the best shot of all of these? That's hard to say, okay. We're not going to commit, huh? You know, I had the opportunity, just probably two weeks, wasn't it, Colonel Casey? About two weeks before that, we went and we toured the facility over there and watched these ladies up there shooting. And this was early in the morning. This was probably 8 o'clock, something like that, and they were up there shooting and practicing, and it was just amazing to watch how involved they was in what they were doing. So it's not a surprise that you guys took the championship. I'm not going to squat. The plaque says that the Office of the Mayor of Granbury, Texas, is a certificate of recognition from and presented to the Granbury Marine Corps Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps. Those are the kind of things that need to be on the front page of the Hood County News, right there, folks. That's some real good stuff. And we really appreciate what they're doing over there at the school and training these folks, and it's, as you can see tonight, it's turned, it's, looks like it's turning out some really good students out there. So thank you very much once again. At this time, we'll go into the citizens' participation. I have a couple of speakers, and I don't recognize the ones, so I'm going to go ahead and go through this, a few of the rules here. The city council provides an opportunity for citizens to present concerns or address issues that are not matters of consideration listed on the agenda, so that the, we will allow the citizen to participate for a period at one city council meeting per month, subject to the following rules. A person wishing to address the city council must first register with the city secretary and provide the following information: their name, address, daytime telephone number, and the subject matter to be presented. Only one person may approach the microphone at a time. The speaker must address their comments to the presiding officer, rather than individual city council members or the audience. And the speaker may file copies of other remarks or supporting information with the city secretary, who will make that information available to the city council and the city manager if requested. The council will be allowed to receive input or information for the future agenda, but will not be allowed to entertain any discussion. The council will allow a maximum of 30 minutes for the citizen participation during this designated council meeting. Our first speaker is Mr. Glenn Newman.
If you'll forgive me, I've never done this before. I'm wearing my veteran hat for a purpose. I have a small business, and I passed, I gave one of the gentlemen my business cards with pictures of the, I've got a hot dog cart business. It's a small business. You know, I served my country for freedom, and today I got informed that I cannot run my legitimate business because of the rules here. The ordinance that I have in my hand, it talks about mobile vending. You cannot basically operate more than 14 consecutive days in a 365-day period. The people downstairs say that's 14 days period. I called up this morning, this afternoon, and asked about what it would cost for a permit. They said you can't operate at all. That's only for special events. That's not what the ordinance, that's not what the ordinance says. So only three minutes, I don't know. I wish you would consider, now I understand there has been a stoppage, because 20 years ago, somebody got sick at Home Depot because of a hot dog cart. I didn't do it. And so I hope that I am not being punished for something that happened long ago. Now I understand, as far as not wanting carts all over the place and everything like that, I understand that. But if you could consider at least a limited number, five to 10, for the city, allow me and other people to operate a small business. We don't have the capital to open up a brick-and-mortar store. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Claudia Southern.
Hi, my name is Claudia Southern, and I live at 226 East Pearl Street, just off the square. It's my honor and privilege to serve on the Historic Commission for the city, and I'm grateful for you placing me there. However, I am not speaking for the Historic Commission tonight, although there are others there, as well as other organizations, that will agree with what I have to say. However, I'm just here as a citizen that lives off on Pearl Street. We have, I want to continue the conversation that started a couple of weeks ago on the city's Opera House Dorm, which most people know the dorm is at, but it was originally the city's hospital. It was built in 1946 and served the city for, and county, for about three decades. After that, it went into its second adaptive reuse of serving theater interns and students who came to Granbury for short periods of time, and who even now don't make much money. So my stance is, we need to save that hospital. We have that building, and we have the Granbury Theater Building, that are mid-century modern buildings. They are the only two on the square. Because we had a large influx of people in the 50s and 60s moving into town, if you go into the old neighborhoods, you will see lots of mid-century houses, and we are very blessed to have those. Their architecture is wonderful, and you think of people like Frank Lloyd Wright when you think of mid-century modern. The hospital was built by a Dr. Ballard, and he was joined in practice a few years later by other doctors. Finally, he had, every doctor in town came and went there, from there, until we started the new complex out on 377. So many of us have never seen it as a hospital. However, if people grew up here, they know that hospital, and they had a relationship with it. Sometimes the question is, why do we save history? Why do we do that? The answer that I always got when I was in all my history classes was that we save historical sites to remember. We remember how we lived, we remember what we did, and so they're very important. I'm hoping we can continue this discussion. Would like very much to hire a historic architect to take a look at the building. There are some different things that can be done with asbestos, but I think this deserves a long conversation, so I would appreciate very much if you all would consider that in the future. Thank you.
That concludes our citizens' participation. One small note here I need to recognize for the record, Councilman Tony Allen is not present tonight. How many missed him? At this time, we'll go into our consent agenda. Two items on the consent agenda is to consider, number one, consider approving city council meeting minutes of March 20th, 2018, regular meeting. And number two is consider adopting ordinance 18-25, amending the general fund and the tourism fund budget for the fiscal year 2017, 2018. Council, you've had an opportunity to look over these two items on the consent agenda. Are there any items on there you'd like to pull off, or discuss, or make changes to? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Any more discussion on the consent agenda, council? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved. At this time, I would like to go into, we'd like to go into our executive session. I will declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session, and all the members are present, except Councilmember Tony Allen. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to our provision of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, 551...
074.
074. Station with attorney. Open session. There was no action taken in the executive session. We now move on to the deliberation agenda. The first item being to consider executing a Chapter 380 agreement by and between the city of Granbury, Texas, and the Granbury 491 LLC. And I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman, our city manager, to give us a staff report on that one, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I would like to happily report to you that we've finalized the terms of the agreement for the Economic Development Incentive Agreement with Granbury 491 LLC regarding the vacant, the currently vacant Kroger facility. And so that's on your agenda for consideration tonight. We do have principals with the company here, if you have any questions, but basically, it's as discussed through the months that we've been working on it, and I guess this is the time to put the icing on the cake and execute the agreements and move forward. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council, any questions or concerns? Scott, you got anything to add to that?
I might just say this for the folks that are in the audience. Out of this agreement, we have worked with the developer, and we're going to have Harbor Lakes extended all the way to Crawford Court with this project, which is a huge improvement for transportation through our community. And we're looking forward to successful development, Robert, and looking forward to fast-tracking the permitting process with you any way we can, so thank you.
So if no further questions, council, I'll entertain a motion to execute the said Chapter 380 agreement.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on this item?
Mayor.
Councilman Couch.
Yeah, I just want to express my gratitude to the city staff and this exciting new project. Ever since I've been on council, we've looked at that building and wanting it to come to fruition, and tonight it does, and I want you to know how much I appreciate the investment that's being made, and what it's going to mean to our economy and to the looks of our highway out there.
Well said. Council, any more discussion? We have a motion and a second. If no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. And by the way, we do have the documents signed, so...
Let's let him get out of here.
I need to go spend some money on the square. What are you talking about? Our next item is a public hearing to consider a following request of the Harbor Lakes Development to, A, execute an FIA, and B, execute a final plat. And I'm going to call upon Scott Sobcek to give us a staff report on that one, if you would, please.
Council, Mr. Manager. Well, we have a two-part agenda item. First and foremost is a facilities improvement agreement, which is a two-party contract by and between the city and the developer, where they are providing surety, finished engineering plans to construct the infrastructure necessary to support the proposal. This particular proposal is Harbor Lakes Phase 14. It's right across from the wastewater treatment plant on Harbor Lakes, on Waters Edge Drive, excuse me, north of Harbor Lakes Drive. It proposes roughly 113 residential, single-family residential lots, two common areas. It is a gated community. You can see all of the findings of facts as a part of the plat and rezoning on your slide. Three entrances. There were variances processed with the preliminary plat application. Those were to allow for double frontage lots in select areas. To allow for roll-down curves instead of stand-up curves. Intersection, intersecting streets with offset less than 125 feet. All those were vetted at the time with the preliminary plat application. Their engineering plans have been approved by the city engineer, Public Works Department, and the inspections department. There are no variances with this particular proposal. As a side note, at the time that we had the deliberation with the planning and zoning commission, there was one outstanding piece of information that staff did not have, and that was a letter from United Cooperative Service. We have a provision in our subdivision ordinance that, in essence, says that the subdivider shall make arrangements with all appropriate utility companies, that is franchise companies, for the extension of their respective utility lines within the addition and for any cost or refunds of such costs. So we have this form letter as a standard. When they don't do, the city of Granbury Electric, they go to Tri-County or United. We get a one-page signed letter from the franchise utility company saying that they've executed and they make, they notate the agreement number, the two-party agreement number, and they also sign a statement that there'll be no out-of-pocket expenses borne by the city. Any overage, cost overage will be borne either by the developer or the franchise utility company. It kicks the city out of the loop. So, since the P&amp;Z meeting on Monday, we have received that signed letter from United. There's no need for this conditional denial anymore. That condition has been met. They're consistent with our several requirements. There's no variances for this. As such, the city staff and the planning commission recommend approval as submitted. So, execution of the FIA and approval of the final plat as submitted by the developer.
With no elseane variances, Mr. Mayor.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Scott. At this time, it is, this is a public hearing. I'll open up the public hearing, and we do have a representative out there, council, that if you have any questions for that person, he'll be glad to answer them, I'm sure. But anybody in the public wish to speak on this matter? Now, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the item number A first, the FIA as said.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corgan. Council, any more discussion on the FIA? If not, all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we'll move into the final plat of this said survey. Council, are there any questions or concerns on the final plat? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said final plat.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Reiner. Council, any more discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That final plat is approved. Thank you. Can you quit stirring up so much dust over there, though?
Thank you.
Our next item is a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance 1826, and I'm going to call upon Scott to give us a staff report on that one, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular piece of property, which is the applicant's requesting a specific use permit, is the old Arrow Feet Store off of Pearl Street on the high school side, west of town. It has since been vacated. What the applicant is requesting is to allow for a auto retail facility and an auto major repair facility and used car sales and ATV sales and repair. It's currently a zone-heavy commercial, but by our zoning ordinance, it requires, the retail sales is allowed by right, but the, but the repair, major auto repair and the sales outside require an S U P. So, that's coming, what's coming before you today are three S U Ps, in essence, rolled into one, to allow for major auto repair, used auto sales, and it's delineated on the site plan where those auto sales may be located, and ATV sales and service. And here's our zoning ordinance. You can see the areas highlighted under heavy commercial with S U Ps. That is, in essence, what the applicant is asking for. Site plan provided by the applicant. You can see the parking. The applicant is aware that he needs approved hard surface for parking and it needs to be striped and inspected prior to the CO being issued. A little purple area to the right, over to the east, adjoining what's an existing multifamily complex, is where the used auto sales will be. There's enough space for about eight or nine cars there. I will notate that any adjustment from this particular site plan will cause a site plan amendment, so they can't deviate from what's being presented in their original application. And then you can see internal to the building, what's being broken off into repair inside, retail, and powder coating behind the main structure. As a part of deliberation, the Planning and Zoning Commission issued six conditions. First and foremost, the S U P will have a term limitation of one year, after which it'll be reevaluated. The site will be developed and used in general performance with the submitted site plan, no major deviations. The display area for the cars and boats is located on the east side of the property on approved hard surface as defined by ordinance. Again, it will need to be inspected prior to the CO being issued. Parking cells and inventory displays shall be provided as shown in outline on the approved site plan. But the remainder of the 1.73 acres is not to be used for the sale of used cars unless the S U P is properly amended. The building will be clad with a minimum 30% extramasonry material as required, defined by zoning ordinance. So, this is a, it's a requirement of our zoning ordinance, once somebody gets a new CO for a non-conforming building, they have to take a step toward compliance or masonry standards. And that means a 30%, either stone, brick, or faux stone can be added onto the building. Again, inspection will be required before this happens, right? And last is item number six. A vegetative evergreen screen shall be installed on the east side of the property adjacent to the apartment, parallel to the auto sales area. We don't have a screening requirement kicked in for an S U P. And so, what, what's being requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission is somewhat of a opaque vegetative hedge that will provide screening along that area that's denoted in white, and they thought that that was a reasonable application. The, when you go out there, it looks more vegetated than it actually is. When you go out there, it's actually two trees and they have a higher canopy. So what they were trying to do is get a lower line canopy in about two to about six to eight or feet to screen and soften from the adjoining multifamily residents across the street, and it seems like a reasonable condition. It's only in that area that runs north-south, parallel to the property, where it dog leashes over to the southwest. It's not intended because there's no, there's no use being done outside in that area. So those are the six conditions as a part of the S U P being reported by the Planning and Zoning Commission. This was a unanimous vote. This is a use that's consistent with our comprehensive plan, so there's no comprehensive plan adjustment needed. Mayor, I'll be happy to entertain any questions through the council. Have any?
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I'll now open up the public hearing to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this issue? Now, I'll close the public hearing. Scott, I will say one thing, that P&amp;Z has done a great job of recognizing what needs to be done with their property. Now, the 30%, is that going to pretty much cover the whole front of that, or is that not?
So, the 30% is generally measured from grade to the top plate, minus the doors and windows, and what 30% coverage is, coverage, well, coverage on these larger buildings is kind of a stone skirt about midway up, and we like to see it on the front of the building and the side, basically the street-side elements.
That's not a real attractive building right there, and that's going to, anything's going to help it, but I'd like to see it. And when you talk about the, you know, the maintenance of it, I mean, they're going to keep vehicles outside that are being worked on, I guess?
No, so, that's the thing, the major auto repair actually needs to be done inside the building, so there's no pulling of engines. The only outside application is the used car sales. They can't use it for disassembled cars, and that's the other thing that P&amp;Z wanted to make sure, hence the one-year term. It'll, it'll be performance evaluated after that one-year term, and they're very clear to the applicant that they don't want outside auto repair work being done along the Pearl Street streetscape.
Council, any more discussion? Any more questions for Scott? Is the applicant out there? Okay, there he is. So, the applicant is out there. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said S U Ps.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corgan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Couch. Council, any more discussion on this item? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number six is a public hearing to consider the following request of Mitch Breeder to, A, execute an FIA and B, execute a final plat. Scott, I'm going to call on you to give us a staff report on that one, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, Mr. Manager. Again, this is a two-part agenda item, and facilities improvement agreement by and between the city and the developer, Mr. Mitch Breeden. By and large, this includes water lines internal to the site. We've seen this particular application as a preliminary plat with two lots, the first and foremost lot being kind of an RV storage facility area with an internal, there we go, with internal fire line and fire line, fire lanes, and also accompanying the preliminary plat was a request to not install sewer at this time, but to have the little office, which is the only vertical building on site, being sustained by a separate system. That variance was passed by council as a part of the preliminary plat. So, they're focusing on Lot 1, Lot 1 of this development only at this time. The final plat and the FIA are consistent with what was discussed and passed by P&amp;Z and council during the preliminary plat application. The FIA, which has construction costs amounting to a little over $150,000, includes largely the water line, a little bit of drainage work, and sidewalks, and some hard flat surface I think that's about it. There's no variances with this. We talked about the conditional variance. Oh, so, as a part of the conditional variance to the sewer, one of the conditions were, was, one of the conditions was that we file an off-site sewer easement through Lot 2. That way, we don't lock ourselves out for serving Lot 2 with sewer, and we file that jointly with the filing of Lot 1, Block 1, and it's good file. So, staff is very aware that that needs to take place. That was a condition imposed by council as a part of the preliminary plat application. There's no variances with this particular final plat application. Your P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval, execution of the FIA and approval of the final plat as submitted.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I'll now open the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns to Scott on this item? If not, we'll do the FIA first. I'll entertain a motion to approve the said FIA.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Corgan. Council, any more discussion on this item?
Counsel.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Gary Couch bade the second. Council, any more discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That FIA is approved. We now go to the final plat. Council, any more discussion or question for Scott on the final plat? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said final plat.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Reiner.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corgan. Any more discussion, council? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That final plat is approved. Well, that concludes, or do we still have an executive session? At one time, we're going to have an executive session. We moved that up in the meeting, so at this time, council, do you have any more discussion? If no further discussion, the council meeting is adjourned.